I have that information for you.
Stephen, this was about the school.
Yes.
This is a statewide commission on redistricting. That is all, sir.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to an opportunity for citizens, any member of the public, to comment to the council on any subject which is not on this evening's agenda, again, on any subject not on this evening's agenda. I have five cards here, I'd like to read the names and see if there's, we missed anyone. Richard and Janet Kirschbaum, Nancy Mc... Hello? Sharon Nye, Al Yuretsky, and Carol Rizan. Again, non-agenda, this is not a BMX, and we'll get to the BMX. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, so we'll start with Richard and Janet Kirschbaum, please, and would everyone limit their comments if they could to three minutes? They would do that.
Ready, go. I'm Janet Kirschbaum, and I live in Pebble Creek, and our office is at 14140 West McDowell, and we're next door to Lipsco. We just heard Sean's report, we've also heard from the ACC, but wanted to let you know that we were really surprised a week ago that we met one of the people that was on the original committee to approve or not to approve the building of the Lipsco. And apparently, they promised them that there would never be an over there issue, and that's why it was approved. So something is really wrong, and of course, it still smells, and we just want to let you know that it does still smell. And what was the other? And, go on.
The other one originally, we were told, are up to seventy percent of their maximum capacity. Tonight, Sean is just informing us that they're one-third below what they should be, and I would, we would like to know, when is the truth going to come out? Is there exactly, where does Lipsco stand in getting this matter taken care of? And, and also, we had made a mention last time we were here, the possibility of the city taking over the Lipsco operation.
We can't answer the second point right away, but I think we can answer the one right away. When do we expect to get with the ACC and the Lipsco ownership?
Mayor, council members, they're on the agenda on the thirteenth of November. We'll be discussing Lipsco and the issues and the action that the city's taking, and we've made an invitation to both Commissioner Mays and also Lipsco representatives, and we've got a confirmation on Lipsco, and we're just waiting to hear back from Commissioner.
Will that be an open meeting, Sean?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, and we understand your second comment as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, you can correct me, but I believe it's Nancy McFiller, is that?
I think so, I'm close enough.
Good evening, I've ranked my three minutes tonight to go to Al Yuretsky. We feel the same way on the issues, and I think he could probably better speak for all of us at this time.
Hey, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you this evening. We'd like to use the projector if possible.
You need to introduce, is there two people?
Yeah, Al Yuretsky, Carol Rizan, who's also on your card.
Okay.
So we're going to save a little bit of time today.
Good, okay, thank you.
If we can have a couple of handouts for you as well, and if we can get the screen up just for a few minutes, that'd be great. Zoom in.
Can somebody from staff help the gentleman out with the?
Yeah, being on one arm.
Oh, okay. Sometimes the operation of it isn't quite honest.
It's going to be the other way. We want to talk to you guys, to you gentlemen, ladies, with regards to the redistricting of the school districts. I'm going to make some assumptions, that the council is already familiar with the process of the unification. So what we'd like to do is, on behalf of the residents of Stray Mountain Ranch, the school district, of Liberty School District, talk to you a little bit about some of our issues and concerns with proposal one and two that's already been submitted. The issues here is that, as you're aware, unification of the schools is to reduce the administration costs and consolidate the smaller-sized schools. The schools within the city of Goodyear are currently split across five districts. The decentralization of the schools within Goodyear is not what existing residents want, nor what's going to attract new residents to the city of Goodyear, as we plan to grow and expand, as you've all been working towards. We've put a little bit of effort to poll the community of Stray Mountain Ranch, we've obtained over eighty signatures with absolutely no effort, and are confident that we can get ten times, a hundred times that with any kind of campaign. Let me tell you a little bit about our concerns with what's been proposed in option one and two by Mayor Shoef of Litchfield Park, who's responsible for the Southwest Valley. Plan one splits Goodyear across three districts, as you'll see later in your appendix, E, F, and G, still leaving Stray Mountain Ranch in Buckeye, which has lower school ratings. Plan two also splits Goodyear across two districts, which has a square mileage and a student population which is not manageable and not efficient. It's over, it's too large. Plan one and two disassociates the three schools of Stray Mountain Ranch with the other parts of Goodyear, and it also uses data that's over two years old in its calculations. As residents and on behalf of the residents of Stray Mountain Ranch and Liberty School District, we represent a significant voting population of Goodyear, supporting the Goodyear business, and expect the children of Stray Mountain Ranch to benefit from the taxes that we provide. So what we'd like to do is propose option three. What we're proposing is the creation of a school district based on city boundaries, and then combining cities to leverage economies of scale. Using city boundaries to form districts would be consistent with national norms. A lot of people in Goodyear, as we grow, are coming from other, you know, cities, out east, San Francisco, Chicago, New York, New Jersey, Delaware, et cetera. That seems to be the norm. Using city boundaries, an option three, will allow the school districts to grow as the city of Goodyear develops, and then subdivide between the city boundaries when necessary, based on the student growth population. Recognizing that Goodyear doesn't have a school administration, we can then join with Litchfield Park to leverage existing administration, and that would be advantageous and resolve the issue of having administration. I'm also leveraging Carol's three minutes.
We can have my three minutes.
Thank you.
We'll be back.
So my request now, to sum that up, of the town council, what we'd like of you, what we'd ask is, can the town council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, meet with Mayor Shoef and reject plan one and two that's been proposed, and present and support plan three as we've just presented? Also, request that Mayor Shoef present plan three on behalf of the city of Goodyear at the upcoming November fifteenth, school district redistricting committee meeting. And then we'd ask that someone from the council represents the city of Goodyear at that November fifteenth meeting on our behalf, to both of us support option three. Behind this is an appendix, I won't go into detail, but it actually shows you that for plan three, we represent one school district with one district office, fifteen elementary schools, three high schools, and fourteen thousand students, which falls within the boundaries of what they're looking to do within the unification. The appendix is for your own reference, as it has the details of plan one, two, and propose three, as well as a copy of the signature we've obtained from the residents of Stray Mountain Ranch. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, I've also been called by others on this subject. But it would be all right if we asked the Vice Mayor to be the contact point on this, and start working with you and Mayor Shoef, and the staff, is that all right? But I think we need a council representative.
Well, it's best for him, because he lives at...
Yeah, can you do that?
Definitely, I'd be very happy to do that. Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, then, lastly, now, since we had three of the speakers spoke on the one subject, we have Sharon Nye.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sharon Nye lived on Cactus Flower in Goodyear for eleven years. On Friday, October thirteenth, the concerned citizens of Goodyear terminated their recall against councilperson Brenda Holland. Copies of the original letter were sent by fax to the Arizona Republic, Southwest Valley Sun, and the West Valley News. Both the Arizona Republic and the Southwest Valley Sun printed the letter almost verbatim, they told the truth. The West Valley View did not. They chose not to choose the truth. I wish to have this letter, this is a copy of the original letter, also forwarded to the council through Attorney Massey. I choose not to read this letter, this is for the public to read. I wish to put this into the minutes and have this be part of this meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So give this to Roarke, please. Okay, any comments on that? Okay, it'll be entered in the minutes as she suggested. Okay? All right, we'll move now to consent agenda, and ask the clerk to read the items by title only, please.
Item eight A, council will consider adopting ordinance zero six dash ten thirty declaring the intent of the city of Goodyear to participate in a regional public transportation authority in Maricopa County. Part two, council will consider adopting resolution zero six dash ten eighty-eight, electing from among the elected officials of the city of Goodyear, a member of the governing board of the regional public transportation authority in Maricopa County. Item B, council will consider adopting resolution zero six dash ten ninety-one, authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Aguapria Union High School District for cost participation in the design and installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Yuma Road and Goodyear Boulevard, and providing for an effective date. Item C, council will consider approving the request from Shafit Ella, representing S.H. Inc. for a Series Twelve liquor license number twelve oh seven six eight one three for Brothers Pizza Express located at four thirty-three North Estrella Parkway. Item D, council will consider adopting resolution zero six dash ten eighty-five, authorizing the city manager and chief of police to accept funds on behalf of the Goodyear Police Department for a full-time victim advocate position for the crisis service unit. Item E, council will consider approving a special use permit to allow a singular wireless communication facility on zero point zero one acres in the Tuscany Falls RV storage facility and maintenance yard, generally located near the southwest corner of Indian School Road and Saraval Avenue in the Pebble Creek Planned Area Development District, with a waiver from the height limitations to allow a height of sixty-five feet, subject to stipulations. Item F, council will consider adopting resolution zero six dash ten eighty-nine, authorizing the mayor of Goodyear to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Litchfield Park for pedestrian crossing on Goodyear property under Litchfield Road north of Wiguan Boulevard. Item G, council will consider authorizing the city manager to renew the three-year temporary license to Arizona American Water Company to provide water to the Perryville Service Area within the city limits. Item H, council will consider approving a comprehensive sign package for the Palm Valley Medical Campus to allow for directional monument and wall signage located at one three six seven seven West McDowell Road within the Palm Valley Planned Area Development District, as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, subject to stipulations. Item I, council will consider approving a request for the amended preliminary plat for Palm Valley Commerce Park Phase Two, subdividing approximately sixty-eight acres into eleven lots and one open space tract, generally located at the northwest corner of McDowell and Litchfield Roads within Phase Two of the Palm Valley Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item J, council will consider approving the comprehensive sign package for Palm Place Plaza, a professional office development on four point four acres, generally located at the southeast corner of McDowell Road and one hundred and forty-fifth Avenue within the general commercial district, subject to stipulations. Item K, council will consider approving a request for a final plat for Palm Valley Commerce Park Phase Two, subdividing approximately sixty-eight acres into eleven lots and one open space tract, generally located at the northwest corner of McDowell and Litchfield Roads within Phase Two of the Palm Valley Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item L, council will consider authorizing the city manager to award a professional services contract to Brown and Caldwell in an amount not to exceed one hundred eighty-five thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars for supervisory control and data acquisition programming and engineering services to develop standardization protocols for all SCADA and process control systems to be utilized in the water and wastewater facilities throughout the city. Council will consider authorizing the city manager to award a professional engineering services contract to Brown and Caldwell in an amount not to exceed three hundred eighty-one thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars for professional services associated with the historic district water and sewer replacement rehabilitation project. Council will consider authorizing the city manager to award a professional services contract to Brown and Caldwell in an amount not to exceed ninety-three thousand eight hundred dollars to complete an assessment of the city of Goodyear lift stations. Item M, council will consider approving consent to assignment from EP The King LLC to Key Bank National Association in the event of foreclosure or conveyance in lieu of foreclosure. Item N, council will consider adopting ordinance zero six dash ten thirty-two, amending the Goodyear City Code by amending chapter three, article three dash four, section three dash four dash two, revising the procedures for purchasing and the purchasing director duties. Item O, council will consider approving a contract with the Policy Development Group in the amount of forty-five thousand for consulting services. Item P, council will consider approving initiation of condemnation actions to secure right-of-way and easements for right-of-entry for Van Buren Road improvements. And item Q, council will consider authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding to authorize the city of Goodyear's participation on the Maricopa County Fire Investigation Task Force.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Mr. Gelzer?
I'd like item E removed. I have some questions.
All right, okay, E. Okay, anyone else like to remove an item from the consent agenda, from the public? Would anyone from the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Councilmember Sousa?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like item eight A, eight C, and eight E pulled.
Okay, repeat that, please. Eight A, eight C, eight E. Eight C, E, okay. Councilmember Antoniak?
And lastly, item eight O is an Oscar.
Just O, just O.
A's already been removed.
But you will excuse yourself.
I will excuse my, yeah, so if you can, if you can use that when you're doing your orders, maybe take A and L last, and I'll excuse my, or first, and I'll excuse myself.
Okay, why don't we take them last?
Okay. Unless ACE go together, do you think, your comment?
We're going to have to say so. I guess two will come at once.
Further? Okay. All right, well then, let's look at the agenda here. I'm going to ask for a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items B, D, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, and P and Q.
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilmember Scott in a second, from Councilmember Holland. Although, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Okay, why don't we go, if there's no objection, to Mr. Gelzer, and that's also yours. Yeah. E, okay.
Mr. Mayor, Gary Gelzer, member of the Goodyear Planning Commission. I may have been remiss in doing my staff work and not reading the staff report on this agenda item. However, when Planning and Zoning Commission took action on this item, we had recommended that a seventy-foot monopalm be authorized, and the reason that we had done this is because this monopalm is going to be very close to a, currently, a sixty-five-foot cellular tower that looks like a palm tree, and we understand that there is inquiry for a third tower in the same general area. And so, our thoughts at P and Z was, and we had recommended, that was, I believe, a seven-oh vote, and staff can concur that, but our recommendation was that the monopals that you would eventually see would be a staggered horizon on, you know, a staggered set of trees on the horizon, even though they are really cell towers, and not just a straight line. So that was why I questioned, I asked for this item to be pulled, and wanted to know whether the seventy-foot recommendation had actually gone through from P and Z or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, stipulation number three sets the maximum height at seventy feet. For some reason, it appeared on the agenda as sixty-five, but the intent was to do, to allow for seventy feet. Yeah, in accordance with Planning and Zoning Commission wishes.
And the plans are received at seventy feet?
Yes, they will.
Harvey, I'm not sure.
The sixty-five is in, right?
Stipulation number three in the staff report has a maximum height of the pole would be allowed up to seventy feet rather than sixty-five feet.
So this is a mistake.
The agenda is not, is not correct, the stipulation is correct.
Okay, Harvey, would you stay there, and then, does that answer your question, Gary?
That's fine, sir.
Okay, Councilmember Sousa?
Okay, the only question I had here was a letter that was sent to the city of Goodyear by the Department of Air Force, by Jim Mitchell, that stated Luke Air Force Base is not the approving authority for this project, and that referring to the tower itself. Singular communications must coordinate with the Federal Aviation Administration and submit an FAA Form seven four six oh dash one, notice of proposed construction or alteration. Luke Air Force Base will withhold comment on this project until we receive approval notification from the FAA. Has the FAA, have you received anything from the FAA, agreeing?
Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, no, we haven't. That would be a requirement before we issue a building permit.
Do you want a full assignment then, for future reference?
I think we can follow up on that, the staff can follow up on that.
What you're telling me is that, can't hear you. I said, what you're telling me is that we'll wait until we get the letter from the FAA before we'll agree to construction?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, fine. That's what it says. Don't be recorded in a minute. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you. We probably should take this motion right now, it is a separate issue. So we're talking about item E, it does not take a roll call vote. Could I have a motion to approve the special use permit for singular wireless with a height change to sixty to seventy feet?
So moved, second.
Okay, motion from Councilmember Scott in a second, from Councilmember Antoniak, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so. Let's go to Nick, here's Charlotte C.
Any question, Mr. Mayor, that I have on C? I was wondering why the applicant is refusing to give us his home phone number, or residence phone number on his application. I think this is important to the police department, should there be some type of problem that occurs in that location, that they should be able to contact the owner via personal phone.
Councilmember, Mayor and Councilmember Sousa, that phone number is on the bulk of the application. We have cut back on the amount of paperwork that we put in your packet. We do have the number, I have called him several times and spoken to him on the phone, so we do have the number.
Okay, fine. And the police department has it?
Yes.
Okay, fine, thank you. So we have another item, Mr. Mayor. Okay, then, could I have a motion to approve the Brothers Pizza Express liquor license?
So moved.
Motion from Councilmember Sousa in a second, from Councilmember Scott, all those in favor, signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? C is approved. Now... Now, we have Councilmember Sousa on A and Councilmember Antoniak on O and A. So Councilmember Antoniak?
Yeah, and I'd just like to just reflect that I'm a step away from the dice, as I have a conflict on these two items.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there was no dispute on O, but let's move to A then.
Okay. I have no questions on item one, but I do have questions on number two. Change, we made on number two. So would you want to take action on number one first, or let you conclude? Now, why don't we take both? The, I appreciate the mayor appointing me to Chairman of the Transportation Committee. However, I found that the Vice Mayor has been involved heavily in these actions in the past, and I would recommend that he become Chairman and a member of the board, and I become an alternate in his place, I think, for the betterment of the movement.
Okay. Thank you. You agree?
Aye. Appreciate, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. Would you like to be the alternate then?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then, could I have a motion approving O as it is written and A as written, except for the change in representation from Councilmember Sousa to Vice Mayor Cavalier for the primary and Councilmember, and vice versa for the alternate?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Councilmember Scott and a second from Councilmember Holland. Do need a roll call vote here.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
He's excused.
Oh, sorry. Uh, Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
Okay, thank you. Then that completes the consent agenda. Okay, we'll now move to the business part of our agenda and welcome Councilmember Antoniak back. Pardon me? No, we did O.
Did O, A, and O?
Did A and O together. Okay. Okay, the first item will be the Australia Mountain BMX issue, and we'll have Jim Nichols present, and then we will have comments from the public. Just advisement on that, if I could. When we get to the public comments, each person will have three minutes to discuss their view or express their view on the subject. If, however, your view has already been expressed, we would appreciate it if you would state your concurrence or agreement with the previous expression and limit your comments to that. However, if you don't feel that satisfies what you need to do, then you have free minutes to talk. Okay? We'll start with Mr. Nichols, then we'll open it up to the public.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here to give you a brief presentation on the Australia Mountain BMX track that is currently in operation in the City of Goodyear. In the way of background, the Australia Mountain BMX Club created a BMX track that is NBL certified, that's National Bicycle League. They are currently holding local practices. They also sponsor regional events and at some point have the potential for national events, meaning meets and races. The bike track, or the BMX track, is supported by the NBL. It has been supported by the City of Goodyear, and it is supported by local parent groups. Some of the support provided by the City of Goodyear to this point include leasing the land for the BMX track at a rate of $5 per year, providing over $400,000 in parking and restroom improvements that benefit both the track and the neighboring dog park, provision of access for electrical service for the BMX track, provision of a hydrant that feeds reclaimed water for their use and dust control, and then finally extensions of project deadlines that have been granted since the inception of the park of December, of the track in December of last year. Just a general timeline for you to give you some of the additional history. The City Council approved the lease for the BMX track in May of 2004. December of last year, the track opened up for its operation and began allowing practices as well as some local events. March of this year, there was a mutually agreed upon timeline for permits and permits to be secured and plans to be submitted to the city by June 30th of this year by the Australia Mountain BMX group. In June of this year, their plans were submitted but were then returned because they were deficient and were lacking the necessary permit fees that the city requires. In August of this year, the Arizona Corporation Commission sent a notice of pending administrative dissolution to the BMX group regarding their nonprofit status due to their annual report not being submitted in time. This month, we staff held a meeting with representative of the track as well as their new architect, James Wirt, where they had, at that point, requested a 60-day extension to complete their plans and submit them to the city. Again, last week, we received confirmation that their annual report for the, to the ACC has been filed, and so it does appear they've met the requirements for their nonprofit Some of the current issues that exist at the track or with the track project, I should say, include the fact that plans and permits have still not been submitted. The project has been in operation almost one year now without permit by the city and without any plans in hand, and this does create a liability on the part of the city because we are allowing the track to operate in an unpermitted fashion. In addition, there are lighting issues as far as lighting needing to be installed and to what degree. Dust control issues do occur or do exist. And then they have an office facility at the site, which is a temporary building that they will need to, if they plan to utilize it, will need to be properly installed and meet all the required codes that would apply. At this point, there are a few options available to the council, and staff is looking for your direction on this. We've grouped them into two basic categories. Either we can grant additional extensions for the completion of the BMX track and allow its operation to continue, or we can terminate the lease and cease operation. A third option, almost a hybrid of these two, was suggested by the mayor that we could grant some kind of an extension, a temporary extension, possibly 60, 90 days, cease operation during that period, but allow the BMX group to complete the requirements that currently are, have not been met, and then upon meeting those requirements within the established deadline, resume operation. That is an option as well, and as well as the other two that were noted. At this point, that's the conclusion of my remarks. I'm open to comments and questions, and I understand you have a number of people who would like to speak on the subject.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Terry, I don't have a card for me. As the project manager, did you want to comment?
I did.
Yes?
I didn't want to be a part of that meeting again, that I was going to be allowed to speak for a moment. I'd like to address just a couple of issues to the mayor and council.
Terry, if you think we're against it, lower it, yeah.
Sorry. As you know, this has been an ongoing project, and it's a nonprofit project that we have worked very hard on. And there was a lot of miscommunications that occurred within city with us as well, and that's why some things occurred, like the opening of the park, and it was based strictly on practices and local races. We do not advertise. We don't do any major events because it was understood with a city official at the time that we did that, who is no longer on board here, that that would be okay to meet a grant requirement that we had with the NBL. Dust control issues, I'd like to address that because we do address that. We address that very strongly with watering. We do follow everything that the county has laid out for us. It's a very unique facility, and when we came to you back in 2003, it was a very unique facility. The city really doesn't have a lot of codes set for that facility, so that's where some of the problems are occurring. There's differences of opinion. There's differences within the arena as far as we're being asked to provide possibly lighting. The recommendation for a lighting was based on a motorcycle track, and Councilman Sousa, I know that you and I spoke at great length about motors, and we don't want motors on that park, and they don't need that type of lighting. So we're trying to work out issues. We've had problems with donors that have bailed on us, and unfortunately, when a donor bails, we're kind of stuck, and we can't make them pay up what they agreed to. And so we've had to go out and search new donors. We have a lot of people here tonight who wants to show the support. What we're asking is, we do have a new architect who is a very great architect. He comes from Phoenix Fire. He builds their fire departments, and he sits on a Buckeye Planning and Development Commission, and he assures me that he's going to get this done rather rapidly and get things moving forward. The problem with the recommendation that wasn't on the board is of, if you choose to allow us the extension but cease operation, it's going to affect our status with the NBL staying certified. There's requirements we have to meet with them at a local level, and so that would impair us and possibly cause us to have to terminate and cease the operation ourselves. I would hope that we could continue where we are. We do take it very strongly, and we are working very hard to try to keep good people on board that have made commitments to us now and make sure that we don't have any further complications. We try to take each barrier we get right out and go after it and get the next donor that we need to do if they fall behind. So that's my plea to you on behalf of the kids, because this is what this is about.
Terry, while you're there, could you tell us in definitive terms what you would complete in 90 days?
In 90 days, the site plan would be completed, and in our proposal, we had--
Approved.
And approved. The site plan would be submitted, hopefully, where our game plan is by the end of the month, to do the initial site plan, the first submittal, because as you all know, it takes multiple submittals sometimes. But the original proposal that was accepted in the RFP allotted for a long-term phased-in construction program. We are at the minimum industry standard right now where we're sitting with just the dirt and a generated gate, and that is across the board in all this, the tracks. A lot of them have just that. That's all they have. We've actually gone beyond that by having it fenced in and some other things. We also carry, and just for your information, the highest insurance policy, liability policy for the city in the United States. No other track carries $6 million. That was a request of Dean Kokenauer. Every other track carries $2 million. We are paying more for that. If I have to terminate that and restart that, then it's going to cost us more. And by ceasing any of the local program, the little amount that the riders pay go towards paying that fee.
But within 90 days, you will complete a site plan. Is that the totality of your 90-day achievement?
Well, we would complete and complete our construction schedule as far as phasing in. There's parts of it that take six or seven months, but we would have the approval with the site plan done within the 90 days.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Now, again, we have several people who would like to speak, and start with Merle Williams, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Merle Williams. Obviously, I'm here to speak on behalf of the BMX. First of all, I want to commend you on what I've seen you doing for the City of Goodyear and the obvious growth that you are achieving here. One of the things that I want to point out to you with the BMX, however, is that you have done a terrific job by putting a dog park right there next to the BMX, beautiful facility, and you're taking care of the pets of the people of Goodyear. There is a water treatment plant right on the other side of it, and you know that because of the odor that comes from that. You're not going to be able to put commercial or housing anywhere near there, and yet, at the same time, what we are trying to help you to see is that the BMX track is one that we, we as people who are participating, our kids, our grandkids, and our, and some of us even, who are participating in the facility that is being presented there, are benefiting greatly. And the reason that I stand up here to say this to you is because I would just like for you to consider the fact that it is a unique facility and that the people who are trying to provide that for not only the City of Goodyear, but also for people throughout the valley who are seeing that, excuse me, that Goodyear is doing this provision for people throughout. And yet, I see here that they have encountered people at the city planning and so forth, and one roadblock after another. What I would request is not only that you not consider terminating their lease, but that you take the steps to help whoever is in charge of helping them to get these things done. You've probably all been up against this, and I know you hear this from people all the time, that it is very difficult to get some of these kinds of things done that are being asked of them. They're willing to do it, and they're providing an opportunity for kids to, kids, grownups, even senior adults, to be able to increase their physical abilities and so forth by that track. So as you consider this, I would just ask that you not even consider terminating their lease, that you would consider whatever it takes to help these people get this facility going. Thank you.
Sir, before you leave?
Yes, sir.
Do we have your address for the record?
Yes, you do. It's, I signed in.
Okay, thank you. 1-5855 West Skinner.
Yes, sir.
Yes. I assume that's Goodyear.
No, that is surprised, but I come to the City of Goodyear like three times a week.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a good point. Thank you, Councilmember Sousa, for reminding me to do that. When you appear before the microphone, would you announce your place of residence, please? We have Seth DeHarty.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. You know, I concur with Merle Williams.
Would you give your address, please?
It's 1-58 West Skinner.
Same as the previous person?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Like I said, I concur with Merle Williams. I think a point that also needs to be made is not only do we get great enjoyment out of going to the track, but there's also a lot of friendships that are developed, excuse me, that wouldn't ordinarily have been developed through that. And it would just be a shame to have that go away.
Okay, thank you. Next is Shannon Doherty, and same address.
Yeah. I volunteer at the track, and I just want to say that all these kids and dads and even some of the moms ride, this has been, for my kids in particular, you know, right now in our country, exercise is not something that a lot of kids do. TV, games. We all go out two, three times a week. We ride together, we converse. We're, it's a family sport. It is not just for the kids or just for the dads. We all go, the moms, the dads. We go out to dinner together. It's providing them with exercise. It's teaching them how to be good sportsmans, how good sportsmanship. It's helping the dads and the kids to be able to have time together. I just think that it's something that should never even be considered to be shut down. There's not very many places like this for all of us as families to do family things together. And, I mean, seriously, these kids enjoy it. I tell my kids we're not going to go to the track, they cry. They love to go to the track. My husband's a fireman. He races. He loves it. He gets hurt. He doesn't care. I mean, it's just pure enjoyment. And the sad thing for us is that the dogs have lights and we don't. We run off our, you know, we run till dark and then we have to stop. And if anybody at all would be willing to donate us lights or whatever, you know, that is what we're working for. And I think that the Woodman Sees, they are working so hard to make this work, but it is nonprofit, and it takes money and it takes time. And I think from what we see, they're doing the best they can to meet the requirements. But, you know, like she said, they've had people donate or say they're going to donate, and they fall out. and they fall out. But just from our point of view, the kids love it, they're getting exercise, they're in better shape than they've been, they're learning how to be good sportsmans. You know, they have to race each other, they're right there next to each other, and they've got to learn that, you know, if somebody bumps you, you don't get mad, and you just say, "Hey, good job." And I just think it's been great for all of us. And I do have a petition that we've all signed, you know, there's three pages of people who want to see this track not only stay, but succeed.
How many names on this petition? Approximate.
Okay. Please. Let's see them. Okay, we now pass to Rick Lehman, please.
Rick Lehman, Mayor, council members, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. Member of the residents of West Valley in Surprise.
Address is?
It's 1-5631 North 168th Avenue. I am a parent of two children that race out there, and like the residents before me who are speaking on behalf of this, what this does for the community, I don't think you guys, we're all intelligent, I think you can comprehend, but this definitely brings and creates a strong partnership in the community in terms of what we do together, how we compete together. It also helps families become stronger. I'm a commercial contractor by trade, and I race on the weekends as a release to enjoy time with my kids and to compete. And one of the things that this has helped me do as a racer and as a parent, it's helped me become stronger with my children. I'm on the road three to four days out of the week, every week, to make a living, to provide for my family, and give them an opportunity to race. And the other thing that, one of the facts that I don't think's been made is, what the Woodman Seas have done for this community and the people that are out there racing, is they're giving us an opportunity, and the city of Goodyear, whether you know it or not, has an opportunity to become one of the only cities in the state of Arizona to be recognized throughout the state of Arizona as a sanctioned body or the gateway to the Olympics for what this track's going to do. The MBL is the only organization that backs the UCI. BMX has been around for years, 1974. I've been racing since I was 13 years old. That's 22 years. With this getting ready to hit the Olympics in 2008, it's going to become bigger than it ever was. Why would a city not want to be on the map as the only city hosting a track of this nature? I mean, it's, to me, it'd be an incredible opportunity for the city as well as the people that race. And I hope that you gentlemen and ladies would consider extending the lease and giving us an opportunity to continue to do what we do with the community as well as our families. Nothing more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have Liz Britt now, please?
Hi, City Council Members, Mayor. My name is Liz Britt, and I reside at 6247 South Avondale Boulevard, which is an annexed town of Tulson. So I'm kind of in the city, or in the county island there. But I wanted to speak on behalf of the BMX track tonight because of what it does bring to the West Valley. We're kind of known as a racing community. And my boys aren't really into baseball, they're not into football, which that abounds in this area, but BMX is their thing, and I truly wish you would consider extending their lease without the 60, 90-day waiting period, because as Terry mentioned, that'll jeopardize the MBL certification. So I would strongly ask you to vote in favor of extending the BMX track. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Rojas, please.
Hi, there, Mayor, council member. Frank Rojas, live at 8226 East Osborne Road. As you know, I agree with the other people that came up and talked, this is the youngest member on this track. He's four years old, and he needs to grow on this track. He really, really needs the track. I mean, without the kids, they can be out there on the streets, they can be doing harmful things, graffitiing. Not one of these kids go out. They go every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to race. So I would love for you to consider the lease. And I'm a racer too, and my son is a second-generation racer. He's out here, he's doing homework. So I would love to you, for you guys, to renew the lease. That'd be really nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you just say, what city are you from?
Scottsdale. I'm from Scottsdale. These two, they're on, they used to be on my team years, or about six or seven months ago, and they travel all the way from Queen Creek, Chandler, just to come and race in Goodyear. So, I mean, please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Atkins, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I am a Goodyear resident, and I represent the Estrella Mountain Ranch, and this is my daughter Hannah. And Hannah's doing quite well with this, and we do find that it's an incredible family activity, and it creates the health and the teamwork, and prevails with the athletic attitude that we need to generate in this community to keep our status. A lot of us at Estrella Mountain Ranch come down and race at the facility, and we ask that you support and extend the leases and deadlines, and give them any assistance that is possible from you at all. We want to point out that it's a family-run, well-organized, passionate, nonprofit organization, that the land that it does reside on, it has very little use for any other application. And I ask that you please provide this effort with your most compassionate and assisted effort. I'm also Senior VP of National Accounts for United Van Lines, and I started helping them recently try to campaign to see if we can get more constituents for donations and sponsorship, corporate sponsorship assistance. And in closing, I just ask you as a citizen of Goodyear to help, thank you, as a citizen of Goodyear, citizen of Goodyear to help us with our children and with activities like BMX, so that they can maintain a healthy, family-oriented activity like this. And I thank you very much for your assistance.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Atkins lives at 18179 West Narromore, Goodyear. Lynette Hill, please.
Mayor, council members, my name's Lynette Hill. I reside at 8428 South 133rd Avenue in Goodyear. I agree with everybody as well, this track has done wonders for my family personally. I have two little boys that race, one of them's back behind me, he too is four, so he needs to grow too. But my husband races as well, and just how it is for our family is amazing. My husband literally sees his kids maybe two hours a night because of his work schedule come the weekend. It's dad time. They have something to go out and do. My kids do not do baseball. We've tried the baseball, the soccer. BMX is their thing, and the self-confidence that it has built in my children, the self-esteem, it's really taught them to be good sportsmanship, which in a lot of, you go to any schoolyard, you're not going to see a lot of good sportsmanship. It's very rare, especially for boys. And for these children to learn that is very important, especially in our society, they can pass that on, hopefully, to some other kids. I would just really like to see the track stay. We are, you know, all of us at the track, we volunteer, we're all willing to do whatever it takes to get this thing up and going and to see it grow. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Pam Fysen, no, is it Paul?
It's Paul.
Paul Fysen, please.
Mayor, council members, I'm Paul Tyson, I'm a Goodyear resident, I live at 14569 West Sheridan. I've lived in Goodyear for a couple of years now. Arizona native, grew up here since 1963, started racing BMX back when Phoenix was pretty tiny. And except for the 12 years I spent away during the Air Force, I've been here in Arizona. And my son and I, I go to this track quite frequently. My little powerhouse 10-year-old here, who does not at this point play football, but I assume he will, but right now, we're into BMX. We, first of all, I would like to thank the Woodman Seas. I don't think, I don't know if any of the council members have been out there, and if you haven't, I would certainly invite you to go see the facility. While it may appear crude on the initial poll-up, they've done a lot of improvements out there, and the track is working wonders for the families. And you've heard a lot of that, and I'll try not to repeat that. But it is certainly a positive family environment, as I think you're picking up on here with all the kids around. And some of the things that that track provides that, you know, a lot of kids just don't get now because of, you know, the digital world we live in, video games, TV, and whatnot, a lot of kids are spending their time doing that. A lot of things that are happening out there are peer interaction and socialization building skills. Now, my son is constantly taking tips from other kids who are older than him, adults who are older than him, obviously. There's senior adults out there, as you can see looking around here, but there's also much younger kids. They come up to him and ask him for help, and they're really helping each other out. And I think it's an amazing thing for kids to get a chance to do. It's just not something that they get to do outside of school really very much anymore. Obviously, you've heard how much it promotes exercise and physical fitness. I won't drill that in anymore. There's another aspect to this track that I've seen my son learn, which is discipline. It's the practice, it's the constantly trying to improve. I mean, things that they don't always get a chance to do, run around the street in front of their house. A new set of goals that he has, just in the last six months, developed, every time we go out there, he tries something new, he sets a goal, he achieves that, he sees that, you know, that's possible. And I think a lot of these kids do the same thing. A big deal for him and for others, I'm sure, is the self-esteem of just getting out there and doing something that a lot of people don't or maybe can't do. And then getting a trophy at the end. We've got a state trophy or a state qualifier, thank you, Terry, a trophy just the other week, that was just about as big as he was, and I can't tell you how happy he was when he brought that home. And it's just those opportunities that not every ballplayer maybe out there gets, but all these kids who maybe don't do that, they get that chance out there. So, again, I would invite you to come out there, I'd invite you to see the operation. You can immediately see what they need out there. I ask you for your support to keep the place open, to keep it running. I've actually volunteered with the Woodman Seas on another track that was out here that the owner just wasn't very responsible and didn't run it. They're trying very hard. I think that there's a lot of issues that they have to deal with that just don't come out to the forefront, and they really do need your support as well as the rest of the city. And I also want to thank you, as a Goodyear resident, for the skate parks you're doing, for the YMCA, for everything that's going on out there. You really, you guys are leaning forward, and Goodyear is a great city to live in, and I appreciate, I appreciate what you've done. And I would like to see this part of that, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have no additional cards, but we do want to thank all the families for coming out and speaking today. It's been very helpful. We could go to a motion, or we could discuss this first.
Discuss it.
What, pardon me?
I would say discuss it.
I would too. Okay. So let's open it for discussion. We've heard three recommendations from the staff, and one of those is certainly would be agreed to by many of the speakers.
Do we have to have a motion for direction?
For direction, but not for discussion.
No, we just want to discuss it.
Because I don't think we know-
What we're going to do.
We have more questions.
Pardon me?
We have more questions.
Yeah, I think so too. Let's try to see where the consensus is. Let's try with Councilmember Lord.
Okay, first of all, I want to, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming tonight, and I thank you for expressing your views. And you're right, the last gentleman, we are very family-oriented here in Goodyear, and we are providing a great number of services and will continue to do with great spirit. I was first introduced to this issue when I first took office, and I went out to the track with Terry, and I came back with a lot of questions for the staff. I also, in the meantime, have on my own gone out there with nobody knowing there and watching what's going on. What I do want to do to clarify with you, our staff has worked with Terry. I don't want you to leave tonight with the impression that they have not. There have been many requirements for this park. Some of those have not been met. Those are requirements that we require of all organizations that are opening a profit or nonprofit in the city of Goodyear. There are things that cover us for liability. There have been times when our staff has asked, made appointments, and those appointments were not kept. So through this process, there's never been the intent that we did not want to cooperate or we wanted to close down. My question to you is, Terry, with having problems with costing, you know, with my trolling throughout the years, when we found ourselves in these situations, we did fundraisers, we did things that showed the community was behind. So that would furnish you with some of the costs that you might need. I have not seen, if maybe I haven't been a part of that and been told, but I have not seen that for you to extend in that manner. And it takes all of you working together to make this happen, and I think the city, to this point, has given a great deal. That is a small lease for a piece of property, and so, in my view, we have given a great deal. And what I'm concerned about, because there have been guidelines for you, meet this appointment, meet that appointment, and you don't show. There have been those cases. That's what I've been told. What I want to be reassured tonight is if we set up a schedule and goals, that you will meet those goals. I don't want, we don't want to run the park, we don't want to take it over from you. You were creative, the kids are enjoying themselves, we want this to happen. But you have to help meet that criteria, and I know it's a hard way to collect money. But from tonight on, if you get an extension, you need to find a way, and you need to organize this group to get out and do some fundraisers so you can make that deadline.
Mayor and council members, if I can address that, I was actually asked by the city officials not to do any publicity whatsoever for the track at this time until the site plan is submitted. That's why there's been nothing really done, except for on the quiet side, because they asked me not to do any publicity at all. And that's why that was handled that way.
Jim?
Terry's correct. The reason for that request was that we were in a very gray area as far as the track being in operation and yet unpermitted, and so it was sort of a balancing act, trying to allow them to keep their status with the MBL, but not create any undue extra liability to the city by generating lots of-
What is our liability? She says that we have this, they have this insurance, but what is the liability if we extend this and somebody gets hurt on the track?
Might be a Kokenhour question. Hope I can look to Lord to answer that question.
What happens if a child gets out and is hurt badly during this period of time?
Dean, while you're explaining that, can you maybe explain the, because I think the liability question's going to come up on a little side from there, or maybe for interrupting here, but I think it's going to come up probably across this dais tonight, so maybe you can give us a captivated version of what you see.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members, Councilmember Lord, to respond to that, certainly anytime we deal with a minor, and there is a severe injury, the city of Goodyear would be named in that suit. To date, the city is protected through what's called an additional insured on the policy, and so the protections are at least, I believe, ample at this point. So what exposures are there going forward? There are those exposures for that injury and the city being sued, but because of how that is structured today through an additional insured, the city is protected.
Thank you.
Yeah, that isn't what I understood talking to you.
Dean is correct, however, the additional liability that we're concerned about at this point is the track operation going on without permits with the city's permission. Insurance on Terry's part around the Estrella Mountain BMX track covers standard operations, standard issues, but if something were to occur related at all to the track, the fact that it's unpermitted and that it's been allowed to operate in that manner, that goes above and beyond, in my opinion, what standard insurance would cover, and that's where the city's liability comes in. Once it's permitted, approved, and meets all requirements, then it just falls under the blanket insurance policy that the track holds for further operation.
So consequently, there's loopholes in that.
Let me go back to-
Consequently, there's loopholes in that, and we could actually be in violation, and- Consequently, there's loopholes in that and we could actually be in violation and...
Could the insurance company come after the city? If in fact someone were hurt, file the suit against the insurance company, the insurance company pays the individual, could the insurance company then come after the city because we permitted or condoned operation on an unpermitted park?
Mr. Mayor, the answer to that would be no. We'd be additional insured on their policy.
Okay, so we would not be vulnerable?
Not from a financial perspective, no.
Is there a limit to that financial liability?
There is, subject to the amount of the policy. In this particular case, I didn't review it prior to the meeting, but I believe we have $1 million with a $2 million aggregate in the underlying and a $5 million umbrella.
You're correct. Okay, good. Okay, Councilmember Antoniak?
Could the, what creative means, Dean, you may not be able to answer this and it may be a community development question or Jim, you may be able to answer this. The question about the permit, would we be able to craft a temporary use permit, for instance, given specific criteria that you could work out? You know, I mean, obviously we don't have lights out there, so it would be, you know, dusk to dawn kind of operation or dawn to dusk operation, you know, and those sort of things. But are there temporary use permits that could be, could that be something that could be crafted that could alleviate some of the concern as to an unpermitted facility?
I would have to look to community development to answer that question.
Harvey's right here.
Mayor, Councilmember Antoniak, I heard the question right because I'm in the backroom. The inquiry was about a temporary use permit. I don't think the use is the issue. The use is allowed, you know, it's city-owned property, the city has allowed that use.
Temporary occupation or something.
The permit would be for the construction activity, the grading and the site plan. It's typically required before work is done on a site. That's what the permit would be for, just that we...
And one question back to the liability question, how, explain, outside of the permitting issue, liability for the BMX track versus the city-owned facility of the skate park? Are there any differences?
The key...
Or a basketball court, for that matter.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Antoniak, the key difference here is control. The city of Goodyear has no control. We leased this to a third party and that is how we insure against those exposures without having that control. Is through the additional insured on the vendor's policy, describing to them what level we should maintain that and then having a hold harmless indemnity that underlines that particular protection.
I assume we're just going around asking questions and we'll get into discussion in a little bit?
Yes. Councilmember Scott?
Once again, the liability, don't, don't, just so I have this very clear, there essentially is no liability on, no recoverable financial liability on the part of the city then, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Scott, the only exposure would be if that policy were to lapse.
Okay. As long as the policy is in effect, there's no recoverable problem here then?
As long as the policy is in effect and the city is named as an additional insured without limiting language, that's correct.
Okay. And is that the way the policy is written right now?
Yes, it is.
Next question is, I don't see any, there was a question about dust, which, you know, wherever you go around here, there's dust, but I see no health hazard with regard to this and therefore I have no problem with it. I mean, why would we, if we have no financial liability and there's no health hazard, I'm missing something here if anyone's opposed to this. Please enlighten me because I cannot understand why we wouldn't give the 60 or 90 day extension here and put this thing to rest. And what are we discussing? Why are we having this discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Scott, the purpose of the discussion is that, to date, commitments have not been met, permits have not been secured as required. We, staff, have grown uncomfortable with the precedence we're setting. We're not advocating any of the options and we've been, tried to present this as objectively as possible.
I appreciate that, Jim, and you're informing us.
Exactly.
But now that we are informed and there's nothing that we don't know about, as far as I'm concerned, as long as there's no health hazard here and no significant financial liability, why not grant an extension? It's been going on this long, why not just give them the extension?
Councilmember Holland?
This is really to Terry because I'm just trying to figure out why the delays have gone on. I know you told us some of the things, but like with these permit fees, is it, there's money associated with it every time you, the permit fees come up? Is it a money issue? I mean, what's...
Mayor and council members, if I may, when we went into this project, we were dealing with different individuals in the city who are no longer here and we were given false information by those individuals saying that since we were nonprofit and it wasn't really a big commercial thing, that those permit fees were not going to be that level. And since that individual has since left, that changed. So as we get a new person, every time we were turning around prior to Deputy City Manager Nichols, things kept getting changed. When we submitted in June, we really had not communicated very well on our part as well with the city because I just assumed that was still in play. And I had spoke to Community Services about that and she didn't see why it wouldn't. Unfortunately, that individual is no longer here at the city and there's no paper trail to show what the verbal was. And unfortunately, I'll be honest with you, I've learned a hard lesson and that is that you can't always take everybody by their word.
Oh, Mayor?
Yes.
If we were to extend this lease, say 60, 90 days, what, we don't have an assurance that you can finish. You mentioned the site plan and that you would probably have that done by the end of the month. You meant October, I'm assuming.
That's what the architect is hoping to have us by, within 30 days from when we met on October 13th with planning, with the new architect and he got all the specs that he needed so he could get his first draft in right away and we'll do a planning meeting with Jim and everybody to try to work out any little bugs. As far as the actual completion of everything, you know, that's the problem is right now we're trying to work out a code agreeance on the lights because there is no code in the city for lights. We actually have a possibility for lights through APS that they would like to bring over from another school, but we're being told now that those lights may not meet the criteria. I'm waiting for a response back from that meeting as to whether or not they would or if they could be retrofitted somehow.
Yeah, I understand that. I think our concern, or at least my concern, is that we're setting a precedent for the others that come in. That's concern. The other one is, can you possibly get through everything you needed to do even if we were to extend the lease?
I believe that if we can get 90 days to get you the site plan and by the end of the actual lease, because this lease didn't actually end until July of next year, before it's up for renewal.
So we're still, we're working on the same lease?
Right.
Because it came up, I guess I thought it was imminent.
No, it's actually through July of this next year. And if we can have the green light to do advertising, to get the fundraising going, then I think we can make all the difference in the world. It was a mutual agreement because it was requested of us not to because of the gray area. And if we can do that, I think it's going to turn it right around. It'll make all the difference.
Have you submitted anything that tells Jim and his staff what will be expected from you? I mean, you know what needs to go into the city. It's just a matter of pulling it all together and getting it in there?
Right. The architect met and I met with Jim and the staff to try to work out all the details of that because originally we were told in a previous planning meeting where no notes were apparently taken, that certain things didn't have to be turned in. So when we turned in in June, they did not have those because we were told it wasn't necessary. A grading plan was actually turned in to the prior deputy city manager because he was kind of overseeing things. Unfortunately, that apparently wasn't what should have happened. But again, I was kind of blind to this whole process and it's not an easy process and I'm trying to work through it and get as significant answers as I can to work through it. And I think now with the architect, we can get those and with Jim.
Okay. I think the concern that I have is if we were to extend this, that are we going to have a problem after that? And again, the precedence issue and we would not want to have any more extensions.
I understand that.
Vice Mayor? The only questions I have are concerning the way you're going to maintain this. Let's say we give you a 90-day permit and you get it completed. You've had problems up to this point. If you've got enough personnel to take care of this and keep this up and maintain it and take care of the security and everything that goes along with it?
Actually, the area is already completely fenced in. It's a totally infenced area. We're out there probably, at least I know my husband's out there daily, monitoring it. We're very conscientious of the outlook of it for the city. We make sure it stays clean, picked up. Our riders are very conscientious when they're out there, they don't leave trash around. Who you see here tonight, a lot of them are volunteers who have come out and helped us do things. When it rains, they come out and help us get rid of the puddles and help us realign things because it's really hard with being farmland to determine exactly where everything flows because our rains are so inconsistent as to where's this going to flow this time. And we do maintain it. We take this very strongly. I am very strong in having a safe place for these riders and one that we can be proud of. The whole reason that my husband and I went into this is because there are other tracks in the state and you have to travel really far for them. And I think most of these riders here will tell you, those tracks are not well-maintained. We take this personally. This is something we want to see as a positive and a safe environment. And if the track's not maintained, it's not safe. And we take that very personally. We have gone through that dirt, sifting out rocks for hours and days and weeks because I don't want a single rock on there. And I think they can attest to, it's a pretty glass-smooth track and we take it very seriously and our dust control, we're very conscientious of. I don't want my kids breathing dust and I don't want to breathe dust.
Okay. The other thing, didn't you have temporary lights up there one night? You must have done something with temporary lights.
We did. We had temporary lights out one night because the NBL requires us to do a state point race and it is very difficult because a lot of kids will travel from out the state to have it and it was hot and so we couldn't have it during the day. So we did rent lights and it was very costly to do and it pretty much took everything that everyone pitched in to do. One of the rental companies did buy one and actually some donors purchased one to rent for that night.
Is this typical of the kind of light that you would have?
No. What we would like to have is just a few poles with a couple of lights. You can't have it really bright and unfortunately, the proposal that was done was 20 candle foot and it was done by dawn half and it's too much.
With the lights and they would be down.
And if we do it that way, it'll be perfect, but not that heavy because you can't have kids riding where it's so bright you can't see the jumps, you can't see the barriers because you can't estimate where you're landing. And we want to make it a safe environment and so we're trying to follow what the standard has been across the board. And if you look at other tracks, they don't have that kind of lighting. They don't have that heavy of lighting.
Any further questions?
Councilmember Susan, any question?
Thank you, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you much. I'm really concerned about the insurance and liability matter. You are paying current premiums on this policy?
The way that works, Mayor and council members, is that when the riders come out, we pay a portion and they, when they pay a practice fee, part of that goes...
Who does?
The riders. When the riders pay the practice fee, that helps, part of it goes towards maintenance, part of it goes back to the National Bicycle League who maintains our insurance. And they keep that in full force. They're very strong about keeping that in full force. We are actually having to pay a little bit more than other tracks because of the $6 million requirement that the city has. But we are determined to keep it that way and it automatically comes out of every event so that it stays in full force and it will not lapse unless we were to shut down the track for a temporary time. That's why I'm concerned about if we do the extension but then have to shut it down. I can't afford to continue that premium on my own.
But then we have a copy, the city has a copy of the policy and it's currently in force.
Yes.
You know, there was a statement, Dave, on Mr. Williams, you know, that he feels that the city, that the city has not done enough. You know, we've got $400,000 invested in this project. That's a lot of money and it's money could have been used elsewhere. The extensions that we've given you down through the years, I think has been overgenerous on the part of the city. I'm going to go along with the extension, provided that everything that you promised this council is going to be accomplished in that 90 days. Now, it's up to you and your, and the people that are here to see that you're financially backed to accommodate these because I, as we said earlier, there, after 90 days, there aren't going to be any more extensions.
I guess I just want to clarify on the 90 days because the 90 days was to get the site plan and then hopefully get everything completed by, before our lease was...
If you have that done, okay, you've got until the end of, end of June or July, rather, to accomplish everything else. And is that your understanding, James?
I'd like that to be our understanding if that's what the council...
Could I, could I clarify the, I would like to see that, say by 1 February, that's a little over 90 days, you have a site permit approval, site plan approval, and then at the termination of the lease in July, we review the situation again to see where you are in your construction. And she doesn't have to have it fully constructed because she probably isn't going on, but at least we'll show, we'll review it for progress at that point. I agree with that. Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, would you entertain a motion of that sort then?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, just before you start going, I just want to clarify a couple of points. As I understand the lease, the lease actually expires May 24th of '07. It's a three-year lease with the option for two, three-year renewals, provided that they are not in default, I mean, the provision at the time that they give the city notice of their intent to renew, which is 120 days prior to the expiration of the lease. So we're talking about February-ish, when you need to be giving the city notice of your intent to renew and at such a point, they need to not be in default of any provision in the lease, of which the permitting is a provision in the lease that they're in default in at this point. So that's just the timeline we're working with. Certainly, we could amend the lease.
That's what the mayor just said, isn't it?
I just want to make sure we're clear on timelines and what the requirements were.
You know, I think reasonable heads will prevail on this issue and I hope they do because, you know, some kids have had to take the time out of their day to come and listen to us debate, you know, amongst a bunch of folks. Quite frankly, you know, no insult to any of my peers or myself here or anybody else that's been dealing with us on the management issue, none of us can get on a bike and do what these kids are trying to do on a daily basis. And so, you know, it's unfortunate that we have to come out and we have to, you know, consume an hour and a half and talk about this, but, you know, I think the 90 day that the mayor just proposed is reasonable and that we revisit this and get an update February 1. You determine whether or not you're going to have intent to renew your lease. But I will tell you, there's, you know, don't, and I say this, and this is no disrespect to any of the parents and the kids in the, in the audience, but don't look a gift horse in the mouth. You know, we've, I think staff has tolerated, as well as you have tolerated, there has been a lot of change in the city, but it obviously has now come to the seven of us and we've sat here and discussed it and it came here for a reason and that was because of either miscommunication or lack of understanding of expectations on either party. And so what I would encourage you to do after every meeting, put a meeting recap together. I do it with my clients, everybody, you know, I mean, put a meeting recap together, send it back to Jim and his staff from you that, you know, says this is what we commit to, this is what we're going to do. Clarify that in writing, get him to send you back a note that says, yes, this is exactly what's going to take place. But I think it would also be very, very smart of you as an organization and of you as parents. You've got a gentleman here who's, you know, talked about being a vice president of United Van Lines. You've got some great support behind you. Use that support. I know I've come out to the track, I've talked to you about that. Put together nonprofit plans. Talk to other nonprofit leaders in the, in the valley. Find out what they do, you know, I mean, we've, I mean, and no doubt, you're no bureaucracy the YMCA is, but they've put together a massive campaign. I don't have any apprehension about you going in advertising. I'd rather have you go advertise and be unsuccessful than to have not advertised and been unsuccessful. So go out, start raising money, get the job done, move on with it, make this successful for the kids. When I rode on one of these things when I was their age, I didn't know if there were permits at the, you know, and it was on Moffett Naval Air Station and the federal government obviously took on some sort of liability. And so, you know, it's, so with that, motion?
I just want to add one more thing. Do you think we could possibly get a request, do you find out the information on the lighting that the other parks use? We have no criteria, so it's not the same. I would appreciate to have that information.
We can pull that from the NBL, Mayor and council members. They actually did a survey a while back and that's what we're kind of looking at and they were looking at to say that the light... they were looking at to say that the light proposed was way too much.
If you could give that to staff, I'd appreciate it.
Motion?
I'd move that we grant an extension for plans to be submitted for 90 days to February 1 and revisit this issue at that time.
The site planned to be submitted and approved?
Yes, granted, yes, pardon me. I will move that item 9A, suggestion A, grant an extension for plans for 90 days to be submitted, permits to be obtained and work to be completed. Or not work to be completed, but permits to be obtained.
I second it.
Is that clear?
Could you repeat that?
Okay.
90 days, extension for plans to be submitted and permits to be obtained.
By February?
By February, yeah. By February 1, you said, was just...
We want to include in there and we'll review the situation again. Oh, no, you want to review it on 24th...
I mean, I think it's got to come back to us sometime in February anyway.
Okay. Right? We'll delimit this just for the extension.
Yes, they need to provide notice of intent to renew.
So that's going to be automatic.
And they're very compliant with that release.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Antoniak.
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Cavalier. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Votes? Guys have 7-0. I'm going to take the address for 7:45 on that clock.
... The 6.5 can be broken down as exclusive of the storm drain installation, roadway excavation and borrow, concrete for sidewalks, bus base, curb and gutters, aggregate base course, subgrade preparation, asphalt placement, indirect cost, engineering design services and right-of-way. The cost is distributed as a cost per lineal foot associated with the amount of frontage along each parcel. The construction costs have been reviewed by Oridian Construction Services. A third party the city has contracted with for construction management and construction administration services. Oridian compared these prices to projects of similar kind in the valley and found them to be, the pricing was compatible. Notifications were sent by letter 21 days prior to this meeting to the property owners. At this time, I'd like to request that City Mayor Kavanaugh Council open this up to the public hearing.
Opportunity for public comment. I've got two cards on this one. John Brazelton and Jim Creedon. Would John like to go first?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Jim Brazelton. Maybe I didn't write for it.
No, I apologize. It's me.
You don't have any comments for this part.
Okay, thank you. Jim Creedon?
Mayor, distinguished councilmembers, I'm Jim Creedon, 1320 North Villanueva Drive, Litchfield Park. I'm here on behalf of the Crane Company and have been utilized by them over the last three years. And I think as we formed a partnership with Goodyear, the reason I'm speaking tonight is to say thank you on this process that you've established for public involvement. Crane owns the 10, 11 acres on Van Buren that they're in the process of trying to sell. I met Mr. Gonzalez and also David Ramirez about two and a half weeks ago. Had meetings with Mr. Gonzalez two or three times and have been really impressed with how they handle my questions. I also think the way you've gone about to establish the criteria, the appraisals, is unique but also very noteworthy. I think you'll find that Crane is going to be a willing partner in that process. And I have found two new staff members that I haven't known before. Years ago, young Mr. Steve Cleveland was my mentor. I'm just kidding. But I really appreciate what you've done here with the public process. I have a little bit of experience in public policy and again, I commend you for this initiative where the city of Goodyear pays for 2/3 of the $21 million. I'm not speaking for any other property owner because I'm sure maybe they all don't view it quite like Crane is viewing it. And I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for anyone else from the public who'd like to speak on this subject. I think now it goes to public hearing and ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please.
Resolution 06-1090, approving and establishing a special public improvement project area, which area benefits from those special public improvements associated with the reconstruction of Van Buren from Litchfield Road to Australia Parkway within the city of Goodyear, which special public improvements will be funded and installed by the city of Goodyear and authorizing the city to recover a proportionate allocated share of the costs of these special public improvements from the owners and/or developers of the identified benefited properties upon their development and establishing an effective date.
I have a motion, please, Mr. Graham. I move that the council adopt resolution of intention number 06-1090, approving and establishing a special public improvement area, which area benefits from those special public improvements associated with the reconstruction of Van Buren from Litchfield Road to Australia Parkway within the city of Goodyear. So moved?
Second.
The motion's from Councilmember Susan and a second from Councilmember Scott. It's open for discussion. Councilmember Susan?
Pardon me.
Mr. Gonzalez, I'm sorry. How will the allocations be determined to the property owners?
The costs were based off of taking the five-lane roadway and dividing four lanes through it and the city handled or being responsible for that fifth lane. And taking those costs and distributing it equally per lineal foot based on all the construction costs.
But it's equalization.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, can I, I'll call both, please.
Councilmember Holland? Aye. Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Hesse 7-0.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to adoption of an ordinance to rezone 180 acres and Farhad Tavasoli. For Harvey.
I'm sorry. Farhad is on his honeymoon. He got married last week, so decided to let him off for his honeymoon, so I'm filling in for him tonight.
That was, yeah, that was awful. That was nice of him.
It was nice of him. Glad we go to such great...
Glad we go to such great lengths.
This is a rezoning application that was submitted by Evergreen Defco, and the property in question has 180 acres, it's the southeast corner of I-10 and Australia Parkway, it's south of I-10, just to the east of Australia Parkway, north of Van Buren. The Bullard Wash runs along its eastern boundary, also just on the east side of Bullard Wash there's Snyder's of Hanover, Southwest Specialty Foods, this property is located in this location, and the Skyway Church is here. This is an existing single-family development, Rancho Mirage was developed by We've Richmond American, and this is an existing commercial, 23 acres, that was developed by Evergreen Defco, the same developer, there's Walgreens at the corners, you know, there's a Chase Bank, and project is filling in nicely at this time. Safeway is located, Safeway Shopping Center, Canyon Trails is located on the west side of Australia Parkway. Second phase of Canyon Trails is being approved by staff, and development will be commencing shortly on this particular project. And Parkway Village, just south of Roosevelt, is under construction at this time, and of course, the Walmart Supercenter is located in this location. This property, we have a unique zoning application, a little bit different than we've seen in other areas of the city, and I think it's, it'll, it's a positive addition to our community. It is consistent with the general plan, let me show you what the request is, first of all, is, there's two components, there is 150 acres, which is being, which is residential, and asked for final PAD approval, and then the purple area is preliminary PAD, which is the remainder of the property, 30 acres, which is being zoned commercial on a preliminary PAD. They do not have all the details for the commercial at this time, but they have worked out the residential area, so there's, the ordinance has two separate actions. What is being proposed, I'll go back to the general plan, this is consistent with the general plan, here's the, here's the general plan, land use categories, the 30 acres, which is community commercial, the, there's 100 acres of what is known as low, medium density residential, four to six dwelling units per acre, 50 units, which is medium high-density residential. The overall density that has been projected in the residential area, 6.6 dwelling units per acre, which would equate to approximately 1,200 dwelling units. They are, however, entitled per zoning, if the zoning is approved, for 1,500 units, since some of the residential may spill out into the commercial at a later time. The property is also impacted by two overlay zones, the high-intensity overlay district that runs along Australia Parkway, that's the crosshatched area, there's also the city center gateway overlay, which is 660 feet both east and west of Australia Parkway, from McDowell down to the city center site. The project is different from the standpoint, it is what we call new urbanism, or some call it traditional or neo-traditional design. Basically, it provides for mixed-use residential commercials, so there's opportunities for people not only to live here, but to work here, and be able to walk to work in the same neighborhood. There's a wide diversity of housing that's going to be permitted, everything from detached to detached units to row houses with alley-loaded units. There is, the housing products will have front porches, recess garages, courtyards, rear-loaded garages, so we're going to get a, just a wide variety of housing types. There's going to be detached sidewalks, wide landscape boulevards, and the streets, as you notice, are straight, as opposed to our normal curvilinear approach, they're going to be straight for efficiency purposes, and they, and there's considerable connectivity between the park areas. The focal point is this village green area, and there is, all total in terms of the open space, there's 17.5 acres, or about 11% open space. One of the things that is a little bit different, also these wide boulevards, they're going to have, they have more, they'll have turf in the right-of-way, and that caused a little bit of consternation with staff, because typically, the Department of Water Resources does not allow turf in our rights-of-way, so all the roads will be private, privately-owned and HOA-maintained, rather than public streets. There were issues with noise, the property is impacted, of course, by I-10 noise, and in accordance with our ordinance, the developer has prepared a sound attenuation study, and will be building a sound wall along the commer- along the residential portion of the development in this location, which varying heights, and that'll be done prior to the first C of O, within 500 feet of the A dot right-of-way. Also, Luke Air Force Base weighed in on this project because of the graduated density concept, and we had a, staff and the developer had a meeting with Luke, and we received a letter from Luke, and they signed off on the project in terms of conformance with the graduated density concept. The citizen review meeting held on August 22nd, or primarily, we heard from the residents in Rancho Mirage, they had two issues, they asked for the land uses along the perimeter to be the lower density, which, this is the lowest density housing products, and this is not quite as low, but it's still lower than some of the other areas, so land use adjacent to their property. And then the road was always stubbed out in Rancho Mirage at this point, because this was always viewed as a second phase of Rancho Mirage, which didn't materialize in the 1990s, and we did tie this in, and they were concerned about cut-through traffic, or traffic going through Rancho Mirage out to Van Buren, so the developer designed it to not facilitate traffic to go through their, their development, so they were satisfied, they were not objecting to the project. I believe that concludes my comments, unless council has any questions. The applicant is here represented by Ed Bull, Birch and Crackeyowa, and can speak to the project in more detail if you'd like.
Thank you. Opportunity for the applicant?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne. Here on behalf of Evergreen, you have a complete staff report, Harvey gave you a complete overview. If you want a presentation from me or particular details, I'd be happy to go into it. We're very pleased to be here with staff's recommendation for approval, unanimous planning commission recommendation for approval, non-known neighborhood opposition, in compliance with every plan that I can think of that the city has, and we agree with the 35 stipulations. So with that as an opening, we would request your approval in accordance with those recommendations and stipulations. As I say, I don't want to skip the important details, but if you're pleased, we're pleased, and I commend you for guidance on if you'd like more of a presentation, or if you're happy, we're happy.
Thank you, Ed. Opportunity for anyone from the public to comment. Okay, I'd like to ask the clerk if she would read the ordinance, please, by title?
Ordinance 06-1033, providing for conditional rezoning of 30 acres of property from agricultural urban zoning district to the preliminary planned area development zoning district for community commercial uses, and rezoning of 150 acres of property from agricultural urban zoning district to the final planned area development zoning district for residential uses known as Australia Commons, generally located at the southeast corner of Interstate 10 and Australia Parkway, amending supplementary zoning map numbers 06-003 and 06-009 to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Motion to accept ordinance 1033 as read by the clerk?
Second. Motion from Councilmember Scott, and a second from Councilmember Antoniak, it's open for discussion. Councilmember Sousa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We might want to call for the rescue squad, because I'm going to vote yes on this from Mr. Bull.
I really think that there's a lot of insight put into this project. I like the approach that we're providing housing for those folks that work in the commercial areas, so they take a walk to work, and that's something we've needed to do in this community for a long time. This is, to me, is a springboard for other construction of that nature. I like the design, I like the fact that they have seven type of offers in their design, the individual homes, so it's well done. I want to thank you very much for bringing this to Goodyear. Don't thank Ed, please.
Councilmember Lord?
I also agree with Councilwoman Sousa, I really love the combination. I only encourage you to be sure that you're taking a look at these conceptual drawings, because there's a lot of detail in them, and a lot of difference in the different development sections, and I would love to see some of those components put into those homes. I look forward to seeing them, and I commend you, because we do need the workforce housing, and we also need the density for the city center, and that provides both avenues. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I have a question on that, on that. What are the prices of the smaller homes, condos? Is that workforce housing, or is that, is that not?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, with all the legal caveats that I always have to get about, you know, want a public report, not offer to sell, and all that kind of stuff, the current estimate for starting prices are in the 200s, which, good, bad, or otherwise, is today workforce housing.
Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say that, that is not workforce housing, so don't...
It's within the realm of affordability, 200, when you look at 356, though.
But that's not, that's not the way workforce housing works, but that's okay, that's more the affordable housing.
Well, I'll take my wording back on workforce housing, but I think it provides some avenue of different work, of different affordability in that community.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, I, let me say this, whether it's good, bad, or other, I don't know where workforce housing versus affordable housing starts, stops.
Well, it doesn't matter, it's, it's the, yeah.
Anything else? No, that's fine. Councilmember Scott?
I just, I like your project, and even more important than my feelings is the fact that Thomas Jefferson would love this, it's one of few projects that are in accord with his grid system, so thank you very much.
Thomas Jefferson's grid system.
Okay, one quickie.
Yeah, real quick. The, you're going to provide enough width in the alleys so that the various trucks can get through, pick up garbage, and whatever?
Yes, there's been various staff scrubs, I'll call it, of the plant so far, and obviously there's additional scrubs that need to occur as we go through the plating processes and so on. I don't mean that in any silly way, it's just that's how I kind of nickname when the staff goes through and compares what's proposed on a plan to the code, and fire requirements and so on, so I have every confidence that the streets and alleys will satisfy the various public safety and other requirements that the city will have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Lord? Aye. Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
I get to vote twice.
Yes. Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
7-0.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to consider annexation of an area of 1,791 acres called Madera, and I think Karen Craver?
Thank you, Mayor, council. As you know, city staff is currently processing the 2,400-acre Madera general plan amendment. It goes from Chandler Heights Road here on the north down to Patterson, which is our current southern city limit. It provides a mix of residential densities, some community commercial land use, open space, and public uses, but about three-quarters of the land is currently not within the city limits, so ARIAD, the developer, has submitted an annexation application to us. As you can see, this red line is the current corporate limits of the city, so about all this area here, and this area of the Madera development, needs to be annexed into the city. When that land gets annexed into the city, this area right here is a county island that will result in state statute, of course, does not allow that, so in order for the Madera annexation to be finalized, that land will have to be annexed in as well. We are recommending that you direct staff to initiate this annexation, and we have a public hearing on the annexation scheduled for December 11.
So this is just to authorize the staff to initiate the annexation actions?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. For an applicant, let's speak?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Karen Keith with Snell &amp; Wilmer, 1 Arizona Center, Phoenix 85004. Very happy to be here before you this evening on behalf of ARIAD, with Mayor Larry Taisiak and Hamid Arshadi, both with ARIAD. We're just in the beginning stages of the, processing the development plan for Madera, 2,400 acres, in accordance with what Karen Craver just recently described. We're very happy to hear the reception of the previous project as new urbanism and neo-traditional design are some of the guiding principles of the Madera plan, so very encouraged to hear that. We're processing the general plan amendment as we speak, and we will be proceeding very shortly to public hearings on that, so this is the first of many public hearings that hope meetings that you'll have on the Madera development plan, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I didn't pick up the developer's name?
ARIAD.
ARIAD, that's what I thought, okay. Okay, thank you, Karen, welcome back. Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, let's see, council discussion, any council discussion?
I need a motion.
I'm sorry, this, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we authorize to staff to proceed with the annexation of 1,791 acres of land generally located between Chandler Heights and Patterson Road, and half-mile east of Rainbow Valley Road, eastward towards 1/4 mile west of 155th Avenue alignment, AKA Madera.
Okay, thank you. Motion from Councilmember Antoniak, and a second from Councilmember Lord, open for discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Close, the ayes have a 7-0, and move the last item on the agenda, city center, and that's Joe Nichols, you're back.
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Little lighter, I noticed.
I hope this presentation will be slightly quicker than my last. I'm just here to give you a very brief update on how staff is proceeding forward with the city center project, I want to make sure you are aware of steps being taken. Before I start, though, I do want to advise you that the purpose of this presentation is not to get into the design elements or down into the real fine details, those types of things will be discussed in more detail at the council events next month, where we'll be asking you for your priorities, and some of the preferences regarding the city center and the elements that'll be included. So what I want to cover today, though, are the steps that we are moving forward with to ensure that we do make progress with the city center project. Currently, we, staff is working with a financial consultant who is providing us with an analysis of the different financial models available to us for funding and building a city center, and in the report I provide you a couple of the different options. One example would be the city funding and building a city center through a, our own design, our own contract, possibly through CMRIS, or a different delivery system, depending on what we feel is best suited for us. To give you an idea of timelines, if we were to start a project like that in November or next month, potentially, our preliminary estimates indicate we... and next month, potentially, our preliminary estimates indicate we could have Phase One of the city center complete by, I believe, the fall of '09. So that's just to give you an idea of timing, and that there is something on the horizon. This is not just one of those projects that'll just keep getting extended. Of course, again, that was based on a November start date, which probably is not going to happen, but it does give you an idea of the fact that it is in the realm of reality for you to see this in the near future. Another option that will be looked at is a public-private partnership, where the city opens the opportunity for private developers to build the city center or components of it, along with or in consideration of development opportunities in the rest of the 40-acre site. That's an option that will be looked at by our consultant. Staff is not being close-minded to other opportunities that may be out there, so we really want this to be an objective analysis. We want any and all options that are at our disposal to be looked at, so that we can proceed with whatever is best suited for us, and ensuring that we make progress. That really concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions. I do want to get any feedback or comments you may have, and just to let you know that we are planning to move forward, and we'll certainly take a lot more of your detailed feedback at the events next month.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Opportunity for public for any comments. Okay, we don't have a motion here, we have no action discussion, only any discussion. We're moving.
I could say yea.
Okay, that's a good way to go for it. Consensus on a yea.
Yea.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to information, and follow-up action on tonight's comments and questions and requests.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we believe that there was just one major poll that was not a formal action, and that was the discussion related to the school redistricting commission, with Frank Cavalier assigned the duty as to be the council contact with staff to work with those individuals that made a presentation this evening, and for us to bring back a report to the council.
Evergreen? Okay, great. Thank you. Do you want to mention about the governor's good place of gathering?
The event tomorrow, is it, yes, tomorrow is for Governor Paul O'Connor to meet with the community at Desert Edge High School, and that will be at noon tomorrow.
That's transferred from the city, community park?
Yes, we're not going to be at the community city park, Gary.
He's not going.
We're going to be at Desert Edge High School. We understand that you'll be rained out, so you can come down and join us.
Those who were to meet at city hall will still meet at city hall, and then go to the high school versus the park.
Be an opportunity to transport ourselves to the high school, if you need to.
Okay. Any inquiries of staff by council? Okay, and just before we adjourn, tomorrow we have an executive session at 6:00 PM here, and then on your 11:13 meeting, which concerns the proposed impact fees, that now is at the Hampton Inn. Hampton Inn, November 13.
You expect the crowd to vote?
November 13.
Yes, sir, we expect all the development community to come out, that's the night of the public hearing, and you also have posted in your attached materials, the work sessions both next week and the following week. Next week will be just the discussion with you and staff regarding everything we've learned from the development community, the inputs on development impact fees, and then, and we added one on the pandemic bird flu. Staff will give you a 30-minute update on that. They have proposed a two-hour session, but we figured the doctor would have to bring in too many wilds.
Too many birds.
I'm sure the doctor will make it a two-hour session.
Yeah. On 11-06, please look at your materials, because we're going to bring up all the different statuses of the facility master plans, Public Works Corporate Yard, 100-acre park, and Phoenix Goodyear North Superfund, in terms of where those things are.
Okay, we need to jump.